Okay, done. Good afternoon, everybody.
Good afternoon.
Eighteenth meeting for the Lenore County Commissioners to order. Sorry about the delay. I have no idea what's going on, but anyhow, we're looking at them. At this time, I would like to ask Commissioner Preston Harris if he would please do our prayer.
Eternal God, our Father, we thank you for another opportunity to have this a brand-new day, a day that you have made. We will rejoice and be glad in it. As we now are about to deliberate with the affairs of Lenore County, we pray that you would bestow a special blessing upon us, that the things we do and say would be pleasing in your sight. And if they are pleasing in your sight, then they will be beneficial to the citizens of Lenore County. Bless us in a mighty way. We will forever give your name to praise, the honor and the glory. It shall be thine. In the name of our Lord and Creator, we thank you. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Commissioner Harris. This time, we'll have our pledge. Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, this time, I will read our ethics law. It is my duty to remind members of the board that it is your responsibility to avoid all conflicts of interest and potential conflicts of interest as defined in the North Carolina Ethics Law. As public servants, it is your duty to continually monitor, evaluate, and manage your personal, financial, and professional affairs in such a way as to ensure the absence of conflicts or potential conflicts. Does any member know of any conflict of interest or potential conflict of interest with respect to any matter coming before the board? Hearing none, we will start with public information and we'll have Ms. Pam Brown with a COVID-19 update.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Okay, so let me give you the North Carolina statistics. So, North Carolina has nineteen thousand and twenty-three lab-confirmed cases, six hundred and sixty-one deaths. The, they have, we have conducted across the state, two-hundred-and-fifty-five thousand, seven-hundred-and-fifty-five tests for COVID-19 with five-hundred-and-eleven people currently hospitalized. Beginning May eleventh, the state started to publicize once a week the number of recovered cases. And so, as of May eleventh, nine-thousand-one-hundred-and-one, one-hundred-and-fifteen people have recovered. The state has defined recovery as fourteen days from the date of the specimen collection for the test for those who are not hospitalized, and twenty-eight days from specimen collection for those who were hospitalized. And generally, those who are hospitalized, of course, have a more significant course of disease. And so, the virus may be present in their bodies longer. And so, that's why the difference between the two dates for defining recovered. So, we have also tried to adopt that definition. We were reporting recoveries before the state just based on our interviews and our following of those who were positive. But now, we're able to utilize that state definition. So, from a county perspective, generally, we receive a lot of things over the weekend, a lot of lab results over the weekend. So, Mondays are typically our busiest day, Mondays and Fridays. And so, as of this afternoon, we have a hundred-and-sixty confirmed cases in Lenore County. And just as a comparison, I just wanted to remind you that the last time that I gave you an update, which was two weeks ago, we were at eighty-eight cases. So, we've seen almost a doubling of cases in the past two weeks. This also means that we really want to make sure that as things start to reopen, that both those organizations that are opening and people who are visiting them are extra vigilant. So, the state is publicizing the three Ws about wearing a mask when you're in public, waiting at least six feet away from other people, and also washing hands very often. So, those are, those are good things, good things that, that people can do to protect their health. So, we have a hundred-and-sixty cases. We have tested one-thousand-eight-hundred-and-ninety-three is the number of tests that have been performed in Lenore County. And again, I just want to remind you that this is probably a little bit undercounted just because there are some labs that only report positive cases back. Most of the bigger labs do report all cases, all negatives and positives, so we're able to track those easily. But some labs may only report positives. So, that's probably a little underreported. But that represents about three-point-four percent of the population. So, I'm really pleased the state is wanting us to get to about five percent of the population tested within the next few weeks. And I feel like we're probably on track to reach that metric with the system that we have in place in Lenore County. And I'll talk a little bit more about that in a few minutes. That also, that also represents that we have about eight percent of our cases, just over eight percent today, of our cases that are coming back positive. There was a point in time last week and the week before where we were getting nine, or ten, or eleven percent of our cases coming back positive. So, we're really pleased to see testing ramping up, but also the number of positives coming back at that eight percent, and we're hoping that that will go down. That's also a metric that the state is utilizing, that they're looking at their percent positive cases. And I just want to really shout out to all of our partners who are willing to share the testing that they are doing in their, in the county with us so that we do have a better sense of how many tests are being performed. So, there are a lot of providers that are doing this, and of course, the RBC and the hospital. We're, we're doing some testing at the Health Department. Some organizations are doing testing. And again, we're so thankful to them for being willing to share what they're doing with us so that we can report these numbers to the community. So, that leaves, we do have two-hundred-and-seventy-six tests that are pending. So, again, you can see that there's a lot of testing that is going on. I'm sorry about that. So, you can see that there is a lot of testing that's going on in the community, and we have eighty-one that we are considered recovered from COVID-19 in the community. Tragically, we still are reporting five deaths, and again, our sympathies to those family members. If you look at the statistics, both with North Carolina and Lenore County, we're seeing something very similar. We're seeing a similar phenomenon. So, the majority of our cases are in our workforce age. So, that twenty to sixty-five is where we're seeing the majority of our cases. However, the majority of our deaths are in those who are sixty-five or older. And again, that is wholly true for Lenore County as well. Last week, the state started publicizing particular testing sites that were widely available to the community. You will notice, if you look at that list, that there is not a particular site that is listed for Lenore County. And the reason for that is we have a, a system that we've been utilizing, I think, very effectively within the county. And so, again, a lot of our providers are testing their own patients. Those who are having the most distressing symptoms are often being tested if they have to report to the hospital. So, that will be their testing site. We do have a respiratory diagnostic center within the county, and so, we do a lot of referrals to that center. And then, also, the Health Department is serving a bit of a, a triage role in, in letting people know where they can go for testing. So, we're kind of serving as that role. People can call us and we can help them to get to where they need to be for testing. We're also looking into putting together in the next few weeks some community testing, and we'll be messaging about that as we put that together. Again, we want to make sure that all communities have access to testing. And so, we're looking to see maybe where we have some testing that maybe needs to be done, but it's not being done. We're trying to really target those areas for the testing that we'll do. And again, we'll be doing some more messaging about that in the next few weeks. We do, we do have, the state has publicized some additional training for contact tracers that are being used for those that they're hiring. But they're also allowing local Health Department staff to go through that testing as well. So, we want to increase the number of staff that I have that are, that are trained as contact tracers. So, we're going to be taking advantage of that free testing. We are very busy. We are going into some other teams to be able to do functions at the Health Department. So, for example, we pulled our clinical teams from doing the screening at the front door, and we now have our admin and our WIC teams that are helping us out with those functions. So, just about every single clinical person in the Health Department or clinically-associated person is working on the monitoring and contact tracing at this time. So, we are, we've been monitoring our patient flows and have noticed that we are able to provide appointments to those who need them within, within a day or two. And so, we are going to go to a four-day-a-week of seeing patients, and that allows us to put more time and resources into the contact tracing. And then, if we need it, we have some other folks we can bring in from other agencies. And then, we can also apply to the state to have a contact tracer here. So, I want to say a thank you to my team because I know that they're doing a lot of work and they're working hard. And with that, I'll open it up to see if you have any questions.
Do you think we're having any problem keeping up with the, the infection cases?
I'm sorry, Commissioner Ross, could you say that one more time?
Yeah, I didn't say that very eloquently. Do you think we're having a problem in keeping up with the cases and the treatment in Lenore County?
So, you mean keeping up with checking in with those who are positive and then making contact with those who are their contacts?
That's correct. The, the cases that we have, getting them treated and keeping people tested and quarantined. Do you foresee that we have a problem or anything, or are we doing a good job keeping up?
Well, I think at this time, we are keeping up with that. It is a very big task because, again, as you can imagine, if somebody is positive and they are now on the recovered list, we're not making contact with them, but we still may have their contacts that we're monitoring. So, it is a lot of moving pieces, and again, that's why we've dedicated more of the staff at the Health Department to that function. Typically, what my staff will do is they will contact those who are positive every day or two. We do have some other organizations that are helping us with that. So, for example, some of the providers that are testing are wanting to do their own follow-up of positives themselves. So, again, we just kind of trade notes and we leave that function to them. But those who are not being followed by their, the organization that tests them or by their providers, we actually make contact with them very frequently. We also make contact with the contacts of those positives to give them instructions. And we monitor them every few days to, to see if they become symptomatic. And if they are, we want to make sure that they get tested or we want to get them into treatment if their, if their symptoms increase in some degree. So, at this point, again, we are keeping up at this point. But I do realize that there is going to be a time when it may be challenging for my staff. So, again, we have some others that are kind of on notice, both within the Health Department and some partners outside of the Health Department can help us. And we also are hoping that we might be able to have one of those state-trained contact tracers, one or two of those come on board too. But we're, we're hanging in there right now.
Good. It sounds like we're not even close to being overwhelmed, that everything's quite manageable at the time.
It's manageable right now. Again, it's a little bit concerning when you look at our doubling rate because, but at the same, by the same token, you know, we do have those that, that almost every day reach that period of time where we can consider them recovered. And then, at that point, we do not follow them past that. So, if we, if we kind of have that balance, it helps us out. But we do have a Plan A, B, C, and D if, if we need to bring more folks in to do, to do this work.
How many people are on ventilator?
I'm, I'm sorry? How many people are on ventilators?
Do we have any that are on ventilators currently?
I cannot speak about what, where we are currently as far as folks that are on ventilators. So, we do have, we do have some, we do have some hospitalized folks, but I'm not sure if they, if those that are hospitalized for COVID-19 are currently on ventilators.
Do you know what percentage are in the hospital of the current infected?
A very, very, very small percentage.
Okay. So, again, it's not overwhelming at all. It seems to be managed and under control.
Yes, and we do get updates from the hospital about where they stand. I think the thing that's interesting about this is that, you know, one of the, one of the reasons we have been messaging about protecting the hospital, protecting EMS as well, is because we don't, we really want to monitor those things that may indicate that we could get into that situation. And the hospital's been doing a great job of monitoring where they are in all of this. But I think it, it, we just kind of have to remember that it's not just those who may have COVID-19 that are going to need those ventilators. And so, we're trying to look at what the needs of the community are in a wider perspective. But at this time, I do not feel, I have not gotten an indication from any agency that they are overwhelmed. And, and I think that Jerry, Jerry King will probably give an update on EMS today.
Got it, Eric?
Eric, can I interrupt? Eric?
Can I do it by calling each commissioner? I was going to give each one of you a chance to speak. So, we'll, we'll be, you want to go? Are you through, Eric? Okay, Craig, go ahead.
I was just gonna, we, we've, I've had some briefings from the hospital just to kind of update you where they are. They, they are managing this few cases that they have. They are well. They are contemplating and beginning to open up some, some surgeries and those type things are be, are coming. So, they feel like they're, it's manageable where they are, and they are beginning to open up some other services. So, that, that gives you some idea of where they are in reference to what the question you're asking.
Sounds good. Anything else, Craig? Mr. Harris?
That's it.
To applaud all of our healthcare workers and our first-line responders for all the work they are doing, regardless of how many we might have, we still know that it, it is a pending problem that can escalate at any time. So, we want to continue to encourage everyone to do their best to make sure that we defeat this enemy that has invaded the United States of America. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. Mr. Vest?
Yes, I'd like to thank Ms. Brown for the statistics she's given us so far. And I feel like we are well along the way in keeping up with our number of people that are being affected by this. And I, I encourage people also to continue to be.
Ms. Cummings?
Yes, I want to thank you for all the work you're doing. I have a question. Public health is important all year round. And with the resources you've devoted to COVID-19, are we still meeting the needs of the community in those many other areas that you've been doing for all these years? Do you have the resources to do that while diverting resources for the other?
Again, we, we've made some, some changes to our clinic flow. We have had some guidance from the state about things that could be postponed or things that could be put on hold. We, we've had some guidance about how to strategically reduce clinics in order not to impact the community. So, we've tried to follow that guidance. Some of our things have been able to go online. So, for example, most of our WIC services are able to be provided online at this time. There are some other things that, you know, a lot of people are kind of naturally postponing some routine healthcare at this point. And so, we're not seeing the patient flows that we normally may see. We do have the ability also for services such as birth control to give baby a, a longer supply so people don't have to come in as often for those services. So, there are some things that we can do so that people do not have to come in as often. One of the things that we are starting to really put on our radar and work on is a plan to increase immunization. So, again, naturally, parents are a bit timid about going into a healthcare facility at this time, but we want to make sure that we don't have on the other end of this some resurgence in vaccine-preventable illnesses. And so, we're, we're working very carefully with our, with our school partners and with our immunizations nurse and our preparedness coordinator to kind of put some plans together about how we can start increasing getting kids back in to get immunization. So, I think it's, it's still a little, you know, people are still a little concerned, as they should be at this time, about getting kids out and about. But we're really hoping that we can put some plans in place that would fit in with maybe where parents and their children are together and maybe not have to have them come into our building. There might be a place where we can meet them. We have the ability to give immunizations outside of our facility. So, we're, we're looking, putting some plans together in that aspect.
Thank you, and you're doing a great job. We're very proud of you. Thank you, Madam Chairman.
Uh-huh. Commissioner Doherty?
I, I don't have any questions, but I do want to say thank you to Pam and her staff for being so very responsive to the community and, and particularly those who have questions regarding this virus. But you've done an outstanding, you and your staff have done an outstanding job in a grueling situation. And, and thank you, and them very much.
Okay. Pam, I had a question I wanted to ask. I've noticed, you know, I think it's, it was initially showing up in New York, but now I understand it's beginning to show up in a couple of other states. Have we had any hints or inkling about the virus that's attacking the children?
I have not heard specifically of cases in North Carolina and definitely have not heard of something in Lenore County at this time. But there was some guidance that went out to providers, and I think it was at the very end of last week. So, that guidance has gone out to all providers so that they know what to look for, what signs and symptoms to look for. So, the pediatricians, the hospitals, all have that guidance document about what are, what are the signs and symptoms. You know, we, we've seen those cases internationally. I'm hoping that that will not become an issue here, but I know that our providers now have the, the, you know, the step-by-step guidance procedure for what to look for, what to report, and, and hopefully, we'll get some more information out of those areas that are dealing with it so that we know the best way to, to treat those children.
Another is that, of course, all of you are aware of the, the judge's ruling saying that, which overruled the governor regarding the opening of churches. And that didn't come out till Saturday. But I did notice that, I don't know, there could have been some, but I didn't know of any churches that did that. I went to a drive-in again, and it was mentioned, but they said they would continue to do what they were doing for a while yet. So, I think people are probably being pretty cautious. So, I was, I was glad to hear their, their attitude. And then, I know my board chair called me about our church, and so, she was going through the steps of all the things that needed to be done, which there are a lot when you get to thinking about it. And I wanted to say, I don't know if Michael was going to talk about this or not, but he and Joey and I know Pam and Brian Hanks worked really hard. I know it was one of Pam's employees that specifically worked on it really hard, and I can't, I'm sorry, Pam. I can't remember her name.
And Kami worked on the brochures.
Right. And they did an excellent job. In fact, I got one, they have one for beauty shops, they have one for churches, they have one for restaurants, they have one for tattoo parlors. And I don't know businesses, and I, I don't know, I think there's a couple more. But they're really great, sort of giving everybody some guidelines as to what to do. And not only have they created them, but they have dispersed them. I know the Sheriff's Department has dispersed some, and some of our folks from Environmental have dispersed some, and I don't know who else, but they've made sure that they've gotten out there. And in fact, I emailed our group and told them there was one of the men, local ministers that mentioned on an update he was giving his church, and they were trying to decide how they were going to open. And they said they had received the pamphlet, and they were pleased because that helped them in their planning. So, I want to say kudos and hats off to Pam and Joey and Michael and Brian and everybody that's been involved in that. But they are quite nice pamphlets. And so, y'all know of anybody that needs one, let's hook them up and make sure they get them. While we're still on that, the governor did have a press conference today. I was hoping he would give more information than he did. But anyway, he's going to have another one, probably will be Wednesday, and I feel like he will let us know then about the possible opening on Friday of at least some things. So, we'll just have to wait and see, I guess, what happens with that. They said they were still following the data pretty closely, and they gave some statistics. But of course, I can't remember those. But anyway. But anyway, Pam, we really do appreciate you and your staff and all our staff because it's affected just about everyone. And as we've all talked about, it's a different way of doing business, but everybody stepped up to the plate, and we really do appreciate it. And Michael, I guess you'll give some information about, and your report about the courthouse hours and that kind of thing. Okay. Thank you again, Pam. We appreciate everything you and your staff are doing. And I was in there the other day, and I see where they've started painting the walls again. It looks like it's really going to be nice. It's so, it's creating such a happy attitude. Every time I go in, it just makes you smile. All right. Thank you so much. At this time, we'll have Jerry King, our EMS director. She's going to give us a COVID-19, and we hate to even say this word, but a hurricane update. But that's the reality. Are you with us, Jerry?
I am, yes, ma'am. I hope everyone's doing well today.
Hope you are also.
Okay. So, just a brief COVID update from the Emergency Services Department. In dealing with the emergency management side of it, we are still receiving resource requests for personal protective equipment and other precautionary items from our local partners. We are sending those requests up through Web EOC to the state. And as we receive those resources, they're coming to a centralized receiving and distribution center. And we meet the eighteen-wheeler at that location, and we obtain those supplies. And we distribute them out to the agencies that have requested them. We are receiving information requests from industry within our community, questions on where they may be able to obtain some of their resource needs. And I have to say that our Economic Development Department with Keely Coontz has been very helpful to us and to our industry in assisting them with obtaining their resource needs. Some of the resources we are not able to obtain through the state. So, my staff, who I just can't say enough about, they are reaching out to our local businesses in an attempt to purchase items such as hand sanitizers, masks, goggles. And we're trying to keep that money local as much as possible. So, we have reached out to some of our local small businesses that have been able to remain open as a central business to obtain some of those resources. So, just from the emergency management side, that's kind of a brief update from us. I'll go into the EMS portion of that when I start talking to you guys a little bit about the fact that this is EMS week. But just to kind of give you an update on. But just to kind of give you an update on, um, hurricane season. So as, as everybody knows, hurricane season does start June the first, however, we've already started. And we did have a named system, Tropical Storm Arthur, that affected the Outer Banks this morning. Um, it has moved off our coast now. However, there is a slow-moving cold front that's going to be coming from west to east for the remainder of this week. So between now and Friday, we could potentially see two to three inches additional rainfall in Lenore County. Um, but that is not Tropical Storm Arthur related. That is a result of that, that cold front. Um, currently our Neuse River is at 4.5 feet, so we're, we're at a good place with our river level. So, um, I will be attending a webinar with the National Weather Service out of Newport and Morehead City on Thursday, and that's regarding the hurricane season preparedness and outlook for 2020. And during this webinar, NOAA should be announcing their 2020 Atlantic hurricane season outlook. So as I get that information, I have seen some information regarding how many projected storms, how many named storms, how many major hurricanes, but I'm unwilling to share those figures because it's not anything that I have received officially from NOAA. So hopefully I will get that information on Thursday and forward that to Mr. James to forward out to the members of the board. Um, I would like to stress for everyone, remember last year we were telling people not to focus on the category of the storm? The category of the storm is based on wind strength. And as we know, typically for our area, it's not the wind strength that gets us, it's the rainfall amount. So even if there is a hurricane that is bearing down on North Carolina and will affect North Carolina, if they happen to downgrade that category, I still want all the citizens to still focus on what we're looking at for rainfall projections, um, and how long we're looking at that storm to affect our area. Because again, that may affect us with flash flooding. Um, we do get some storm surge flooding as we did with Florence, and of course, we get our river flooding. So just because a storm is weakening in wind strength, let's not focus on that category. Some early preparations that people can, um, go ahead and start taking are making a list of supplies for your hurricane kit, restock and, and purchase items that you don't already have. Um, and you, you do have a few weeks to plan for that. And obviously with COVID-19, some of those items that you may need, um, may be a little bit harder to find. So go ahead and start looking now. Um, some examples are flashlights, batteries. You don't want to use candles because candles are an open flame and you don't want to have the, um, possibility of starting a fire in your home. A weather radio, some type of weather radio that can be battery operated or even a solar-powered radio, weather radio, so that you can get those weather updates. If you haven't already done so, please sign up for our SWIFT 911, which is the Mass Notification System for Lenore County. We'll have, um, you'll get weather updates via that system. You'll need water and non-perishable food items to last you at least 72 hours. We say that because typically your power's gonna be restored within that 72-hour time period, but at least for 72 hours, if not longer. Make sure you have your prescription refills, have cash money because if the power is out, the ATM is not gonna work, so you'll need to have cash money for purchases. Um, if you wear glasses, try to have a second pair of glasses. And don't forget your pets when you're, when you're placing items in your hurricane kit. Make sure you have food, um, toys, anything like that, that you can for your pets. Organize important documents such as insurance, um, coverage information because you'll need that. If you have pictures of items within your home that would need to be replaced in the event of damage, make sure you have those pictures stored somewhere. Um, determine if you live in a hurricane evacuation zone. And this is particularly of interest to those who live along our coastal counties. However, we can have evacuate, voluntary evacuations in Lenore County based on flash flooding or river flooding. So just make sure that you're following, um, the information put out by our office so that you'll know whether or not you would need to evacuate. Um, and then we're also currently, my office, the Health Department, DSS, we're working on a plan for sheltering during this COVID-19 crisis because there may be some intricacies in keeping healthy people and unhealthy people from integrating so that we don't have, um, an outbreak. So supplies to be considered for citizens that in relation to possible sheltering, masks and gloves, please try to bring your own if you can, as there may be a very limited to, uh, supply for distribution at the shelter. Again, prescription medications, snack food items, bedding, um, toys, games, coloring books to occupy your children because they're gonna get bored in that shelter, um, chargers for electronic devices. And we also have a companion-friendly shelter at our primary shelter at LCC. So please remember your pets. If you bring a pet to the companion-friendly shelter, make sure you have food, you have food and water dishes, toys, leashes, and if you have a kennel for your pet, please bring that. Um, anything that will assist our shelter, um, operation personnel would be very beneficial. Um, so that's kind of my brief little synopsis for the hurricane season update. So now I would like to just kind of focus on EMS week. So EMS week started Sunday, the 17th, and it runs through Saturday, May 23rd. We actually have some vendors and some local businesses that are gonna be supplying meals for our shift personnel, so we really appreciate, um, that offering, that help. I know that Sugar Hill Pizzeria supplied pizzas today and they'll supply pizzas tomorrow and Wednesday. And then we have another, we have a vendor, one of our medical vendors that's gonna supply food for Wednesday, Thursday and Friday. So we truly appreciate the help of our community. Uh, I did want to share some numbers with you for EMS. So a, a look at 2019 in review. We were, EMS was dispatched to 10,801 calls. We treated 10,429 patients. We transported 7,950 patients. And we provided more than 1,354 hours of education to our staff. So that just lets you know and lets our community know that we are constantly trying to keep up with the latest and greatest trends out there to make sure that we're providing the best that we can.
Jerry, would, would you repeat those, uh, stats please?
Absolutely. Dispatched to 10,801 calls, treated 10,429 patients. Of those, we transported 7,950 patients and then 1,354 hours of continuing education.
Quite impressive.
So, um, the, we received a 2020 E S O, E S O is our charting system, a 2020 E S O EMS index, which was insights and best practices for EMS agencies. And what the, what E S O looked at was 1,365 agencies across the nation. They reviewed 6.45 million calls to determine a national average of calls performed correctly by a percentage. So I really have to brag on my EMS personnel at this point in time because this team is phenomenal. Um, compared to the national average for strokes, E S O for the national average was 72% correct, a correct, um, diagnosis. Lenore County was 91% correct. For E T C O two, now E T C O two is a measurement of tube placement if we're having to provide airway assistance to, um, someone that we've had to innovate. So with E S O, that's a 98% correct rate. Lenore County was at 100% correct. For, sorry, for 12 lead interpretation, E S O is at 83%. For the national average, Lenore County is 98%. For aspirin administration, E S O had 53%. Lenore County is at 54%. So we're still a little bit above that average, um, and we're gonna just try to do some education among our staff as well as education among the community for aspirin administration. For overdoses, E S O, now this is based on a percentage of your total call volume. So across the nation, total call volume and average is 2.45%. For Lenore County, it was 9.57%. However, because we provide Narcan to our law enforcement officers, we have a large success rate with our overdoses. And finally, the last area that they had was lights and siren response. So that would be an emergency response to a call. The average, um, correct response for this, for the nation was 87%. For Lenore County, we're at 93%. So that means that only 7% of the time that we run lights and siren, we probably didn't need it. So all of our numbers were well above the national average. So that just speaks volumes for the professionalism of our EMS team and I, I just can't even stress them enough. Um, in kind of going over a little bit about our EMS team in regards to the COVID response, um, we are still working a modified schedule. So instead of the four shifts, working 24 hours on and 72 hours off, we have combined some personnel and we are now working three shifts with a schedule of 24 hours on and 48 hours off. And what that allows us to do is put an additional ambulance on every day. So we're actually running six ambulances instead of four. Uh, we are, some of the protective measures that are being taken, we have enhanced our personal protective equipment policy in an effort to protect our team. So goggles and eye protect, goggles or eye protection, mask and gloves are required on every call. And then an addition of a gown would be required on a high-risk, unknown risk or a positive COVID call. If we have a high-risk, unknown risk or a positive COVID call and we have to perform CPR or do an aerosolized treatment, aerosolized treatment would be a nebulizer to assist someone that's having difficulty breathing, um, a CPAP to again, assist someone who's having difficulty breathing. Then we have to wear a PAPR. Um, PAPR stands for Powered Air Purifying Respirator. And what that is, is it's a hood that takes ambient air that may be contaminated with one or more types of pathogens and it actively removes a sufficient portion of those hazards and then redelivers the clean air to the user's face. Um, providers use this PPE again, if we have a call that is respiratory issues with aerosolized treatment and again, on all cardiac arrest calls. That's in addition to the gown and gloves. So if a patient is transported that's high-risk or unknown risk or COVID-positive, then that vehicle and any personnel are, have to be decontaminated immediately following transferring that patient over to the hospital. The providers, um, on the call, when they get to our primary station, they're gonna spray or fog disinfectant in the cab of their truck as well as in the patient compartment of the truck. Then those providers are gonna go, they're gonna, we have a shower trailer at Station Four, they're going to have to shower. They shampoo their hair, wash, have to completely shower. Their contaminated clothes are put in a bag, they have to be washed, we wash them at Station Four, they have to put on a clean uniform. Then another group of people while they're doing that, usually the commander and/or captain and the crew from Station Four, if they're not already on a call, have to go in, they wipe down the ambulance, they have to spray and wipe down all the equipment in the ambulance, including the portable equipment we have in the stretcher. Um, the, if, if an employee has a wallet in their pocket, we have to decontaminate that wallet. Any personal items they have go into a bucket and, um, we have to decontaminate that as long as with our equipment. So because they have to shower and we have to wash their clothes so frequently, if they run so many calls that they don't have a spare uniform, we have purchased nurse-type scrubs so that if they don't have a clean uniform and we haven't gotten one ready for them yet, they're gonna put on those scrubs and they'll respond to the next call wearing that type of equipment. Um, so the decon crew, the crew that's gonna go into that truck and get that equipment, they're gonna wear a full Tyvek suit. So those suits are those white suits that you see with the hoods, um, with the booties that cover their boots. So it covers everything but this part of their face. And then they're gonna be wearing goggles and a mask, so no part of their body is, um, exposed. Um, and then they'll be wearing gloves as well. So I can speak from experience because I actually had the opportunity, um, to assist with decon on Friday. And in about a, about an hour and a half time period, we decon three trucks. And let me tell you, I'm, I have so much respect for my team that has to do that day in and day out because those Tyvek suits are very hot, I was very sweaty, I'm very old, and old, old chubby people have a hard time with, uh, with sweating. But I can tell you that they are doing this tirelessly and endlessly and without complaint and I just can't brag enough about my team. So we are averaging and, and speaking a little bit about the, um, Health Department seeing that the testing going down to about 8%. So with our office, we're actually seeing our numbers go up unfortunately. We're seeing an increase in our call volume, we're seeing an increase in our calls that are either high-risk, unknown risk, or have been COVID-positive. Um, so we're averaging about five calls a day that require decon, which is gonna equal at least 10 people. Um, we are doing, we are running an average of about 30 calls per day. Friday, uh, this past Friday, May 15th, we had nine high-risk patients and 19 personnel that had to be deconbed. Of those 19 personnel that had to be deconbed, one crew had to be deconbed four times. So that means four times in that 24-hour period, they had to shower, wash their hair, completely shower, change clothes. Sunday, yesterday, May 17th, we had 11 high-risk patients that were transported and 20 personnel that were deconbed. So that just gives you a little idea of, um, the state that we're in, in the EMS division. Um, so they're working for their EMS week freebies if they can get, if they can get that free, that free lunch. So, um, that's really all that I had, just to kind of bring you guys up to speed. So, um, I'm available for any questions if anyone has anything.
Okay, Commissioner Doherty? Do you have anything?
Yeah, I have, um, a couple of non-related questions.
Yes, sir.
One is, um, can you give us an update where we're standing in terms of the radio tower coverage? Um, and the second question Jerry is, um, where do we stand in, in terms of the FEMA, I guess demolition or burnouts of the vacated homes? Um, so if you could do that, I'd appreciate it. And, and let me say before I go, thank you so much to you and all your EMS folks because they do a phenomenal job.
Thank you, thank you. I'll, I'll make sure that for those that weren't able to watch your, watch this today, I'll make sure I pass that message on.
Thank you.
Regarding the tower, the radio tower coverage, um, I believe that Mr. James will probably be discussing that, um, as part of the budget, um, with, with our budget shortfalls and some of the decisions that had to be made. So I don't really wanna speak out of turn on that, so I'll let Mr. James address that if that's all right. Um, in regards to, you know what, I'm old and I forgot what your second question was.
You're mature, not old.
Oh my gosh.
So, uh, the second question was, um, these homes that were FEMA homes during the flood process, um, that have yet to be, um, demoed or burned as, as part of fire training, whatever, wh- where are we at? What's, what's the holdup on that and what's the status in terms of that?
Okay. So, um, we actually, they're on the consent agenda, you guys will have a resolution from me for, um, approved contractors for demolition. So that's where we're at, we're on, we're on track with that. We did, um, try to, we're waiting to see if we're gonna be given an extension because the Hurricane Matthew project was supposed to be completed by July 1st, but obviously with all the other hurricanes that have come in, um, it has delayed some of that. So, we are in the process at this point in time of, once this is approved, then our, um, our contractor, which is David Harris, he will, um, begin issuing out those orders for those demolitions. And as far as, um, burning the structures, I don't know how many of those will actually be burned just because, um, now, in order to do that, they have to have a live burn instructor, they have to have an ambulance crew. So, some of the fire departments are, um, some want to do it, some don't. So, right now, we're just going the demolition route at this point.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Ms. Cummings?
Um, I, I really don't have any questions. That was an outstanding presentation, and you know how much I love your team. Thank you for all you're doing.
Thank you.
Commissioner Best?
Yes, I want to thank, uh, Jeff for giving that presentation. It seemed like our, you know, man, personnel are being well-trained and staying up to date and keeping up with, uh, what they need to be done, and response and number that she given that was outstanding. Keep up the good work.
Thank you.
Commissioner Hill?
Uh, just wanted to say thank you. Appreciate everything everybody's doing. Um, very valuable team and, um, working together well, so thanks for everything.
Commissioner Harris?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you very much, Ms. Jerry and your staff, for the work you continue to do. And if you're old, then that kind of puts me out of the picture. But nevertheless, we, we appreciate all that you do and all that you are going to do as long as you are still a part of the EMS department. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Commissioner Rouse?
Thanks, Jerry. Appreciate everything you're doing.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
I just say did I, Jerry? You know what I think of them too, and I think your scenario, you were telling us about, you know, what they've been facing lately. And it also reminds us that, you know, it puts them on the front line of being exposed and, as well as, as they try very hard, but there probably still is some risk of exposure to their families. So, please let them know how much we appreciate them and all that you do. And, uh, I didn't mention a while ago, but I want to thank you and Pam for, um, Fridays, along with, um, County Manager Michael, that, um, for doing the briefs and the updates. I think that's been a good, uh, source of re, of information for folks, so we appreciate you doing that.
Thank you.
And at this time, we have a proclamation for National EMS Week, May 17th through 23rd. And Commissioner Harris, would you please read that?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you very much. It's my pleasure and privilege. Emergency Medical Services Week. 2020, a proclamation. Whereas, emergency medical services is a vital public service, and whereas the members of emergency medical services teams are ready to provide life-saving care to those in need 24 hours a day, seven days a week. And whereas, access to quality emergency care dramatically improves the survival and recovery rate of those who experience sudden illness or injury. And whereas, the emergency medical services system consists of emergency physicians, emergency nurses, emergency medical technicians, paramedics, medical dispatchers, firefighters, educators, administrators, and others. And whereas, the members of emergency medical service teams, whether career or volunteer, engage in thousands of hours of specialized training and continuing education to enhance their life-saving skills. And whereas, it is appropriate to recognize the value and the accomplishments of emergency medical services providers by designating Emergency Medical Services Week. And now, therefore, we, the Board of Commissioners of Lenore County, do so hereby proclaim, May 17th through 23, 2020, as Emergency Medical Services Week in Lenore County, and urge our citizens to acknowledge the contributions of these loyal public servants and encourage the community to observe this week with appropriate programs, ceremonies, and activities. Thank you.
And as you heard Jerry say, we have had some of the businesses to provide meals and things for them, so we truly appreciate that. And, uh, I think that lets our employees know that they are recognized and appreciated also. Uh, if you didn't get the chance to read, uh, this, uh, the EMS proclamation is included in the consent agenda. Uh, I did add another proclamation, which I should have done at the first meeting in, uh, in May, but, uh, it got lost in the shuffle, I'll be honest with you. But it's a proclamation because this is National Community Action Month. And so, we have a proclamation to be read for that too. And very appropriate because, uh, Commissioner Harris also sits on the Green Lamp Board, which is our community action agency, as do us. So, Commissioner Harris, would you please read that one also?
Yes, ma'am. Proclamation. Whereas, community action has made essential contributions to individuals and families across this nation by creating economic opportunities and strengthening communities. And whereas, community action is a robust state and local force connecting people to life-changing services and creating pathways to prosperity in 99% of all American counties. And whereas, community action builds and promotes economic stability as an essential aspect of enabling and enhancing stronger communities and stable homes. And whereas, community action promotes community-wide solutions to challenges throughout our cities, suburbs, and rural areas. And whereas, community action delivers, innovates, and supports to create greater economic and opportunities for families and children to succeed. And whereas, community action insists on community participation and involvement, ensuring that all sectors of the community have a voice and will be heard. And whereas, community action is celebrating 56 years of innovation, impact, and providing proven results for Americans. Now, therefore, the Lenore County Board of Commissioners do hereby proclaim May 2020 as Community Action Month in recognition of the hard work and dedication of Green Lamp Community Action Agency on this day, the 18th day of May 2020. Thank you.
And just to give you a little bit of background, I wanted to, I'll remind you of some of the programs that they're involved in. They have early, uh, Head Start and Head Start. They do the Foster Grandparents, which was formerly managed by CASL. They have the Workforce Innovation and Opportunity Act, where they serve youth and adults. They have the, uh, Community Services Block Grant. They have Emergency Solutions Grant, and the list goes on and on and on. And I know they work with our daycare centers also to try to get them to the five-star level, which is, uh, a big, uh, asset. The other thing I wanted to say is that it also is Head Start's 55th anniversary today. So, I've got a call that I'm going to be in on for that. Uh, Ms. Angela Bates is our Executive Director, and since she has come, the budget has doubled and is working on tri, tri, tripling. And, uh, they have received approximately 2.9, almost $3 million in grants. And so, that says a lot. They also were designated by the, uh, Governor's Office as a, uh, entity to, uh, be recognized and to be submitted for any possible grants, um, in helping others in different, these different areas. So, we're very proud of them. Uh, anybody have any questions about either one of those? If not, uh, Vicky, we didn't have any public comments or anybody to press or anybody to sign up or did, anything, did we?
Did not.
Okay, uh, we'll go down to the agenda now. Under the consent...
Do we need to vote on those proclamations?
I'm, I'm fixing to do that. Okay, under your consent agenda, the proclamation for EMS was considered, was, uh, included on, as item number four. So, I would like to amend that and make that items four A and B. And A would be the National EMS Week, and B would be the Community Action Week. So, those two items would be included in your consent agenda. Is there anything in the consent agenda that anybody would like to pull out or have the brothers, uh, discussion? Okay, um, at this time, I would, uh, entertain a motion to approve our agenda as amended for items, uh, one through 13 being, one through 12, I'm sorry, being the consent agenda, and items, uh, 13 and 14 would be, uh, our new business and our appointments. Um, so, I would ask for a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Ms. Cummings, I'll set motion.
Craig, you'll say.
Okay, thank you. June made the motion and Craig made the second. Uh, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And all opposed likewise. Okay, we are down to item number 13, New Business.
I mean, I appreciate the board. Um, I'd like to turn it over to Keely Coontz, if we can get her plugged in here, uh, to introduce this item about the Economic Development Agreement and Purchase Order Agreement for the potential sale of the Lenore County Shell Building Number 3. Over to you, Keely.
Are you with us, Keely?
Can you hear me now? Okay. Okay, now I can. Um, hope you all are doing well. I'll, I'll try to be as brief as possible. But, um, today, we do have before you an offer on the Shell Building, and it will be a retention project with, um, Southern Vinyl. And, um, they are right now renting two buildings from the Pool Management Group. Um, so, we are saving those jobs and that, that business from going to another county. So, we're thankful for, um, retaining those and, and also the Seagulls Group because they're a, a very good, um, business venture to have on our side and on our team. Um, but I wanted to give you a little background on the Shell Building. So, we completed that Shell Building in 2010, um, in January. And just since I've been there, it has been a great attraction for Lenore County Economic Development. And that's what really a Shell Building is. It's a marketing tool, um, that we're able to use to get companies to look at our area, um, and also just to bring attention to, um, Lenore County. And it's, it's done that, I think. But, um, I'm excited that we're able to, to pass it along to a new owner and, um, hopefully, in the future, we're going to be able to, to do another one. Um, but I just wanted to give a background also on the jobs and investment that this company will be saving and bringing. So, right now, they have 17 full-time, um, employees. And within five years, they're planning to hire, um, about 50 more jobs. And their investment is going to be, um, a little over $4 million total investment for that Shell Building over the next five years. And it's, they're getting a little over eight acres with it, so we're not selling all of the land that's right there with the Shell Building. So, that gives us a potential, um, marketing tool also for a greenfield site. Um, and I'm trying to think. Is there anything else specific? Michael?
Uh, no, I think we're good, Akili. Uh, Chairman, we're just turning it over to you all. If there's any questions from the board on this particular project, um, we can answer those right now.
Okay, Mr. Doughty, you got any questions?
I have none.
Ms. Cummings?
None, thank you.
Mr. Best?
I don't have any.
Okay, Mr. Hill?
No, uh, other than I know there's, it's been an ongoing negotiation that has taken some time. There's been a lot of time spent on this, and I appreciate the time and effort that has gone into this, and it's made a difference.
Mr. Harris?
Yes, I appreciate the work that Ms. Keely is doing, and I want you to keep up the good work of helping us to make some progress with the economic development here in Lenore County. Thank you very much.
Mr. Rouse?
I just want to say thank you. Appreciate the hard work, and it's nice to get rid of it. Nice, we could have got twice that, but just help out right now with all the tax shortfalls we're about to experience.
Exactly, and I want to say a big thank you to Michael and Keely. Uh, this has been ongoing for quite a while, and they have been doing a lot of negotiating and, uh, finally came to some figures that we felt like everybody could work with. And as Eric said, this is definitely something that's coming at a good time because it's a win-win. We're keeping a business that will hire approximately 18 more employees, and, uh, it's giving us a little revenue that can, we certainly can use it this time. So, uh, it's just, like I said, a win-win, and we're happy that Southern Vinyl will be staying here and, um, expanding their business. Okay, at this time...
Madam Chairman, I, I might stick in a little information from the legal perspective here. The, uh, last three words of your resolution say, uh, pending legal review. Uh, I want you to know that the legal review is complete. Um, the, uh, as, as you may be aware, the county attorney contract doesn't include real estate closings. And so, uh, up through 2013, uh, that was when we had a real estate matter. That was something that I, I did, uh, as a part of my private business and built separately. And, uh, since I have closed my private practice, uh, we've been getting other, uh, private attorneys to do that, typically Joe Bauer. Uh, at, uh, Mr. James' direction, I did, uh, talk to Joe Bauer about, uh, representing, uh, Lenore County on this real estate closing. He said he'd be glad to do that. Uh, Joe has reviewed the, um, the Economic Development Agreement and the contract. Uh, and I, I just, uh, talked, uh, to him, uh, within the hour before the meeting started. And, uh, I, I think everything is, uh, i- is clear and we're good to go.
Great, thank you, Mr. Griffin. Uh, we would entertain a motion.
Motion.
Been a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Uh, any more discussion?
I didn't hear. Who made the motion, Madam Chair?
I do.
Eric Rouse?
Let's say Eric made the motion and, uh, Mac second. That's okay.
Thank you.
Actually, the way around, but that's okay.
Well, change it around, Vicky. Mac made the motion and Eric second.
Thank you.
Uh-huh, if we could have a roll call vote, Vicky?
Commissioner Doughty?
Yes.
Commissioner Cummings?
Yes.
Commissioner Best?
Yes.
Commissioner Sutton?
Yes.
Commissioner Hill?
Yes.
Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Commissioner Rouse?
Yes.
Thank you all. Maybe one day we'll have enough money, we can build another one. Okay, item number, um, 15 is, uh, those who have been, uh, nominated for boards. We have the second reading for Connie Huffman for the Lenore County Board of Trustees. whose term will expire if we approve her in twenty twenty-four. What is the will of the board?
Mac Doughty moved to approve.
Mac Doughty made a motion to approve.
June Cummings second.
June Cummings second. Okay. All right. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And all opposed likewise. Okay, Ms. Huffman's name will go back to the Board of Trustees. Okay. Manager James?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I'll try to be brief in my last few comments. Attached in the agenda for this meeting is the Planning and Inspection Report and the Transit Reports, as always. So if the board has any questions, please let us know. I wanted to thank Jerry for kind of sharing her story about EMS and some of the things that they're going with. And not only through the COVID-nineteen event, but a lot of the challenges they face on an everyday basis. We definitely have a good team down there that are dedicated to what they do. So I appreciate her sharing those statistics with the board. I think as a, as a commission, you should be proud of the, of the staff that you have there. They do a very, a very good job. Kind of formally what Pam was talking about, we're talking about how to reopen the courthouse and reopen county facilities as we kind of enter that conversation statewide about reopening North Carolina. We've had some good conversations with the judges here at the courthouse. And I want to thank them for their willingness to collaborate with us as we try to maintain the safety of our employees in our buildings, but also maintain the safety of the public who conduct business here. So we're still working towards that June one date to reopen the courthouse or court services. Still a lot of moving parts, but it's going in a good direction to get that way. With the remainder of the county facilities, we're doing a lot of planning work right now to make sure we have the appropriate glass partitions at some of our customer-facing counter, counters so that we're kind of able to operate under the continued threat of COVID-nineteen to again protect the employees' health and safety and also our customers as well who come in county facilities. Right now, we're shooting for a mid-June reopening. We'll share more information with the board in more detail as to exactly when we'll open up county offices to the public. Right now, we're still going to operate as is and largely handle business over the phone via email and online like that. And I do want to again thank staff for their flexibility throughout this whole event. They have really impressed me all the time with their willingness to come to work during this event. They're dealing with everything that we deal with at home, but coming here and continuing to serve the residents of our county and not skipping a beat through all this. And so I'm very proud of them for what they've done. At our last meeting, we talked a bit about the COVID-nineteen funds that Raleigh released down to the counties. If you recall, the Lenore County's portion is about one point, one-point-one-six million, I believe. We did submit that application last week to the pandemic office in Raleigh. We anticipate getting those funds back down to us in the middle of June. So with that application was a kind of roughed-out plan of where the funds will be spent. The majority of ours was towards public health, communication, public health outreach, access to PPE, any kind of resource that we would need is where the bulk of those funds we have allocated to go towards. As I noted in the update last week, we have reached out to the city of Kentston, La Grange, and Pink Hill about those funds, also then be able to apply for reimbursement to the county as those funds are available to help some of their local costs as well for their COVID-nineteen response. So we look forward to hearing back from the state and getting those funds here in Lenore County to be used for our community. Chairman, we were talking earlier about those COVID pamphlets and I appreciate you recognizing staff for that. It was Kiana and Kami in the Public Health Office that have done a great job designing those information pieces. And I thank Brian and the deputies and I appreciate Sheriff Ingram allowing them to take time out of their day to go around businesses and churches and to share that useful information. Again, we're trying to be a resource to folks in our community that can have people locally. They can call and, and ask questions too and not just have to call up to Raleigh or anywhere else. And we can be a resource here locally. So I appreciate the work that they did in designing that. I think it makes our organization look very professional and that we're engaged in trying to, to be an asset in Lenore County. Lastly, I want to again thank the board for their patience through these Zoom calls. Our next meeting will not be Zoom. Thank the Lord. I look forward to getting everybody in the same room together. So we're going to schedule our first budget presentation, June first, at the Cooperative Extension Office. You'll be receiving a, the manager's recommended budget. You'll get a copy of the presentation and a copy of the budget transmittal letter prior to the meeting. So the week prior to June first, you'll receive all the information to be able to weed through the, the details and tell us whether we're crazy or not crazy on some of this information. But look forward to presenting that to the board and us kind of having those conversations of where we think we're going to land next year. I want to thank Joey and Sandy and our department heads. This is beyond a difficult. Mr. Rouse, you all right?
Got a little topsy-turvy here for a minute.
Again, I want to thank staff for their time. This is going to be a, a very, very difficult budget year. And you'll hear me say that twelve times, I'm sure, at our budget meeting. But we look forward to, to getting that in front of you all and, and getting it approved eventually. Madam Chair, that's all from me right now.
Do you, Michael, do you foresee that being a moving document? I mean, with us, you know, I think I was talking with Senator Perry and I think he was saying it probably August before they really got their figures in.
It may be. I mean, some counties are, I think I mentioned it before, some counties are adopting an interim budget. That gives you thirty-day timelines to, to work with. I'm not sure, I don't know anymore by August than I know right now. We're being as conservative as possible in our budget estimates. And you'll see in the presentations, there's mechanisms to, to manage the budget even past adoption to still curtail expenses throughout the year to minimize what you're going to spend in, in fund balance. So yeah, it's something we're going to evaluate throughout the fiscal year to see where we are. But I think we've, we've probably been as conservative and, and as we could possibly be at this point in time to, to, for us to work from. You're going to see a significant reduction in expenses regardless.
And I appreciate us having just a regular budget because we always had the flexibility to, you know, change line items as we do throughout the year. So I'm glad that we're just going to go ahead and adopt a, a regular budget. So I think that'd be great. Okay, was that it?
I have a question.
Yes, Jim.
I asked a question earlier to Jerry about the demolition of the FEMA homes. And we start cleaning up the county, get some of those eyesores out of the way. Can you give us some kind of an update on that?
That's today, we're approving the, I believe it was a contract, approving the bid for the demolition service. So once that obviously is approved today, we can get with the contractors to get that scheduled.
Item six on the consent agenda.
Yes, Chairman, item six. So following today, we'll reach out to the contractors, get that scheduled and get that work done. For a specific timeline, I don't have one quite yet, Commissioner, but I can get that to you all.
Thank you.
Anything else, Mr. James?
No, ma'am.
Okay, this time I'll go to each commissioner. Commissioner Doughty, did you have anything else?
No, ma'am. I think I've asked enough, but thank you.
Well, that's how you find out answers is ask. We appreciate those too. Ms. Cummings?
Yes, I'd just like to share that, and both you and Commissioner Best were on the call. We did have a call meeting for General Crown Prevention Council. They have advertised the remainder of funds, administrative funds that we have. And we hope to get those out and spent by the end of June. The Board of Trustees for LCC, the Finance Committee met last week and the board will meet tonight. We're going to try to do it on campus, some of us, not all of us, but, but some of us. And, and we social-distanced well in the Finance Committee meeting. It, I felt very comfortable and I've been one of the, one of the scaredy-cats in this process. I felt really comfortable doing that. So I'm looking forward to seeing the members tonight. And I will tell you, based on what I heard at the Finance Committee meeting, our, our community college is ready to go forward and do an excellent job in, in coming back. Thank you.
Thank you, Jane. Commissioner Best?
Yes, thank you. I think we can meet in a very convenient day. I like the information that we received, both from, from Ms. Brown and Jerry. That gives an update of where we are. And I look forward to seeing everybody at the next meeting.
Thank you. Commissioner Hill?
I don't have anything. Did I? Thank you.
I want to commend Commissioner Hill and the job that the chamber is doing. They, of course, are faced like everybody else with such unusual circumstances. But I do know they've been reaching out to the businesses and still going strong. So we appreciate your leadership in the chamber's actions, Craig. Thank you. And Commissioner Harris?
Yes, ma'am. I do want to just thank all of our board members for their continued collaboration as we go through this pandemic. But also, as I was on a meeting with the Green Lamp, which is certainly working very, very strenuously during this pandemic. Organizations that do help in the community, they didn't stop. They are continually working. And as we gave the Community Action Proclamation, it just goes to show that during situations like this, we begin to see the work that they are doing to help those who are most, I guess, the most violently affected individuals are being helped by these community action groups. And we applaud them and we applaud all of you with the various agencies that you're working with as they continue to work, even when the society itself might be closed down. People are still working to make things better for other people. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. I just want to add to that because of some national guidelines and things, those employees have had some of their salaries raised. So that's been a good positive thing to see too. But they've really worked hard and done food giveaways and helped people with housing and everything. So we're real proud of that organization. We're a little biased, but we can't help it. Commissioner Rouse?
I was beginning to wonder if Craig wanted to say, and we lost him right then. But no, I appreciate it. I do think as, it's no secret, it's time to go back to work. I feel that everybody's ready and I think the economy is going to spring back to life very quickly. First and foremost being the beauty salons looking at, and the barbers looking at this crowd and tell everybody's going to run out there. But hopefully, we're close to the end of it. And I look forward to seeing you in the chambers in our next meeting.
Sounds good. I, I had intended to do this before this meeting, but I didn't. But I will get evaluations to y'all regarding our county manager, Mr. James, because it's time for us to do that again. Just want to remind everybody, and I cannot believe that Jerry or Pam either once said it, but I guess they had so much information. But the three W's, wait, which means social distance, and wear a mask and wash your hands or use sanitizer. You know, it's a little eerie sometimes. I was riding down the street the other day and it's going by, past the Health Department. And here was one of the ladies standing out beside a car and she had the hood on and she had the mask on and she had on the surgical gown. So it just reminded me of the times and situations that we were in. So again, we're so thankful for our folks that are on the front line. So I, I don't think I've got anything else. So I guess June the first, we will be at the Extension Office and have our meeting there and see everybody face-to-face. And we will all hope that we are open back up so we can get trimmed and colored and all this stuff that we need to do with our hair. So anyhow, I appreciate all of y'all and good news.
Madam Chairman, could, could I update you on one legal matter before we break?
Sure.
The manager had asked me to make you aware of a lawsuit that the Lenore County Board of Elections is dealing with and exactly how that's being handled. For those of you who are not aware of it, the North Carolina State Conference of the NAACP and/or Individuals filed suit seeking to decertify and prevent the use of the Express Boat Device, alleging that it is not sufficiently secure and reliable. The suit was brought against the Lenore County Board of Elections and twenty other boards of elections that have chosen to use this device. So when the local Board of Election received the suit, for, for a while, we were not sure exactly what to do with it. We were hoping that the State Board of Election would step in and represent those twenty-one counties. And fortunately, that's exactly what's going to happen. The State Board of Election voted unanimously on Friday to direct the attorney, the North Carolina Attorney General and his staff attorneys in the North Carolina Department of Justice to represent those, those twenty-one counties due to the threat that the lawsuit posed to the uniform election process in the state. And it certainly would not have made sense to have twenty-one different sets of attorneys filing pleadings and making court appearances when, when we're all in the same boat on this. So that, that has, has been taken care of from that perspective. The, the Attorney General will be handling that.
That's good to hear. So that's another bill we won't have to fill. All right. I hope everybody continues to do well. And if nobody else has anything, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Motion. Is there a second?
Second. June Cummings.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed likewise. Y'all have a great week.
Thank you.
You too.
Thank you.